I'm seeing her tomorrow.
I'm seeing her tomorrow.
4:40 I've gone, brother.
I can't do this.
I'm seeing her tomorrow.
Where?
Down the... Well, it's no longer... It's now... No, it's no longer... These people will...
What, back to that shop? Oh, it brings you to that. Yeah, I usually go down, make a lot of...
So moved.
You got it.
And they're doing well.
Yeah.
Okay, we're ready? Good evening, everyone. We will call to order the regular meeting of Marshall Borough Council. It's April 15th, 2019. If you'll all please rise for a moment of silence and our Pledge of Allegiance first.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please?
Here.
Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Thank you, Virginia. We have some special presentations tonight. First one we're going to do is for Interfaith Food Alliance. It's in recognition of all the hard work that they have done for the needy families in Marsville and all the volunteers and everyone in the organization that's been helping out with that. If it's a pleasure of the council, I will move the motion 9F under action items to vote on after I read the resolution for Interfaith Food Alliance. The motion is to adopt the actual resolution.
Please.
That's fine.
Okay, with no objections, then we will be moving that. Okay. First, I will read the resolution. Okay. Borough of Marsville, Resolution Number 1027. Whereas the Interfaith Food Alliance is a coalition of 12 communities of faith who have come together to combat the issue of food insecurity in our community through education, service, and advocacy. The service component is met through hosting the Family Backpack Center, a supplemental food source for children of the Marsville School District and their families who have been identified as a risk of food insecurity. The food center is housed in Marsville United Methodist Church and is open four days each month, and families are invited to visit two of those four days. The Alliance has partnered with many businesses, individuals, faith communities, civic organizations, and government officials to achieve their mission. They also partner with the Bucks County Opportunity Council and receive meat through their food distribution program. Whereas the Alliance began in 2014 as a grassroots organization of concerned citizens, the Alliance was approved as a nonprofit organization in 2015 and first opened its stores by serving four families. The Alliance currently has 42 families registered and serves over 200 children, though not all families visit regularly. Whereas, one of the best things about the center are the relationships they have built with the families who visit. Over time, trust has been built between the guests and the volunteers, and the many relationships and friendships have been established to assist the families in additional ways. Whereas, a thing about the center is the birthday shelf. Guests let staff know when there are going to be a celebration of a birthday in a family so that the Alliance can provide cake mix, icing, candles, party plates, napkins, and other decorations. The Alliance provides these items not only for the children's birthdays, but also for the adults in the family, as we believe that being able to celebrate their milestones together strengthens the family unit, and everyone should be able to celebrate their personal holiday. Whereas, the Alliance collects and shares school supplies each year and provides holiday gifts for each child at Christmas. The Alliance also provides jackets for each child in the fall and other little surprises throughout the year. Whereas, the Alliance knows it cannot solve all the problems of the families who visit the center. However, they are honored to walk with them as they are able, doing what they can where they are. Now therefore be resolved that the Marshall Borough Council, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, hereby recognizes this 15th day of April 2019 in honor of the Interfaith Food Alliance. Resolve this 15th day of April 2019 in council chambers. I proceed to want to thank your group. I know there's been many volunteers that help you. I've heard a lot about you. I think it's a wonderful thing that you do for our town. I'm going to introduce Diane Casey, who is one of the founders of the organization. If you would like to come to the podium and say a few things about your organization. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'll let you speak first, then we'll vote that resolution. Sorry. Thanks, Mike.
On behalf of our many volunteers, thank you for this very special honor. It is a privilege to serve the families in Marsville. There are many ways that people can help our group. We can... You can volunteer at the pantry. You can buy one of these wonderful shirts and wear it proudly. You can advocate on behalf of those who are experiencing poverty and talk with elected officials, encouraging them to support benefits which help people in poverty. You can add your name to our mailing list. You can like us on Facebook. You can help out at the upcoming Marsville Letter Carriers Food Drive on May 11th. We are a beneficiary of that food drive. You can purchase tickets to an upcoming fundraiser at Trenton Thunder on May 11th that we're going to hold, and another fundraiser at Bertucci's on June 26th. We are very thankful for the support of so many in our community, and we couldn't do what we do without the support of individuals, businesses, faith communities, civic organizations, and our elected officials. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to actually call the motion for adopting the resolution recognizing Interfaith Food Alliance. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. At this time, I'd like to have you all come up in front of the flag here from your organization that's here, and we will present this to you. And I'd like the council members to please come down and have a photo with them.
Hard this for me to get up.
Virginia, do you mind taking?
Is it too late to buy one?
Yeah. Talk to her. Are you shivering?
She drove back to my house before coming here because I had to bring a coat this morning. I was like, it's too cold.
It got to like 63 or 64 in the morning. It was kind of warm around the house, but it's been dropping all night.
All right, Mike, you can sit down. I like their shirts.
And for those who showed up for this, don't feel inclined to have to stay. There's going to be a whole lot of boring stuff to follow.
I have a pleasure in the evening. Thank you. No, you have to stay, Scott. You have to stay. Okay. All right, the 4B, we're not going to go over it tonight. It was already shown at the agenda meeting. I believe this information's on our website, correct, Scott, about Patriots Park? Okay. So, the next one of our presentations will be from Barcane... Barbicane, Thornton &amp; Company, which is our auditing firm. And we have Timothy Sawyer will be here presenting. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. So yes, my name's Timothy Sawyer. I'm the audit partner at Barbicane Thornton &amp; Company. This is our second year that we did the audit. As you can remember, last year I was here in May to present, so we were a little earlier this year. I gave you... handed out a packet, so I'm going to go over the audit results as opposed to flipping through the entire audit report. So it'll be kind of a brief highlight for you. On the first page has a summary of the audit results. So when we're talking about the audit results, we're talking about the 2018 Municipal Annual Audit and Financial Report, which is done in accordance with a prescribed form that's put out by the Department of Community and Economic Development, or DCD as we refer to it. It is, like I said, it's a prescribed form, so it is not in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, but it is in a form that the DCD, they do accept, so. With that, as we kind of look at the audit timeline, we were here in March, from the 11th through the 15th, on-site to do our detailed testing. Our audit report is dated in March 29th. We met the April 1st deadline for filing it electronically with the DCD, so it was sent in and accepted. And then, of course, I am here tonight to present you the results. Kind of skipping down on that first page, we look at the audit results. I mentioned about general accepted accounting principles. Your audit opinion has an adverse opinion because it's not done in accordance with those standards. That's the only reason. The second part of that is you have an unmodified or clean audit opinion related to the financial results as a prescribed form in accordance with those standards that the DCD accepts. So you did get a clean audit opinion. And then we also issued an unmodified audit opinion on the audit of the library fund. On the next couple pages, we have some charts for you, which gives you a comparison of 2018 compared to 2017. So the first one goes over your cash balances by the different categories and funds. So overall, your cash, you were at 1.9 million in 2017. You're down about 191,000 to 1.7 in 2018, but there's a couple of main reasons for that. I'll kind of touch on that in some of the other charts. The next chart goes over your major and total revenues. So we compared your real estate taxes, your intergovernmental revenues, which are like grants, your charges for services. And then, obviously, those three don't total everything, but I did show you your total revenues just to give you a shot that your revenues are pretty much right on where they were last year. You're at 6.4 last year, 6.5 million this year. The next chart goes over your major and total expenditures. Again, by these... These are in the different categories or departments, if you will, in the DCD report. So your overall expenditures were 5.6 last year. This year, they're 6.7. Again, it's mainly two factors that kind of play into that. As you look at the different areas, you can see general government was up about 300,000 from 400,000 to 723. And your culture and rec, which includes your parks, was at 534, and so that's 867. The two biggest reasons for those two increases, obviously, in parks, had a lot to do with the project related to the ML Rider Middle School. And then with the general government, a lot of that had to do with engineering costs. And there were two main buckets with the engineering costs that kind of led to an increase. One was for the Greenway Trails, and the other was for a flood protection grant that had a lot of engineering costs associated with that. And we did a lot of testing with those different invoices. The next schedule goes over your fund balances. So you can see kind of as your cash also went down, your fund balance went down overall from 1.7 to 1.5 for those same reasons. And then you have your different buckets. And really, what you're looking at is for your general fund, you have 660,000 in general fund fund balance, and that's available for the borough to do any kind of, you know, activities during the fund year. That's your reserve as you go into the next year. And then the final chart just shows you your library fund, since we did a separate audit on that. And those results are pretty much right online with what they were were last year, no major changes with the library fund. So that's kind of a quick synopsis of the audit. Other than that, like I could say, we were on-site for a week here. We had, you know, got everything we needed while we were here. The staff, between Mica and Virginia and also Scott, very helpful to our staff that was here. So everything went nice and smoothly. Does council have any questions related to the audit?
No. I want to thank you for getting this as quickly as you did. I know you were under the gun last year when you were brought in at the timeframe you were, and you really had to work hard to get that last year for us. So I appreciate it coming in way on time this time. Thank you so much.
I anticipate no problems going forward, so.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question. Just on the revenues, looking at these... These are cash revenues, so if we have a grant for a million dollars, but we only got $200,000, the $200,000 is what shows up in here?
Correct.
Okay. That's it.
Anyone else have any other questions? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, that's the end of our presentation, and we will begin with the public comment. Please, when you come to the microphone, try to limit your comments to three minutes. I will time you at the 30-minute second. I'll raise my hand to let you know where you are so you can wrap up. Thank you. Okay, first one... First one would be Kurt Holt-Hendricks. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Kurt Holt-Hendricks, 300 Melvin Court North. That was nice. Here in the audit was clean last year. That's encouraging. I want to thank everyone that came out this weekend for the cleanups. You guys did an amazing job at the plaza, down at Williamson Park. Terrific effort. I don't know who all was there, but as another resident, thank you very much for making our town look so nice. The tot lot, gorgeous project. Again, as a resident, I want to thank you guys for sticking with it. I want to thank the council people who made the bold move to rewrite the RCO, to get bids done, to move this town forward in a positive manner. That's what it takes, people doing things in a bold fashion, spending the money, getting the grant secured, moving forward. That's what people want with their tax dollars. They want progress. They want places cleaned up. They want things rebuilt. They're not worried about, is it the right line and the money came from? They're worried about, is my tax dollars being spent in a productive manner? And you have done that. And as another resident, I thank you very much for the tot lot. It's gorgeous. The kids are going to love it. Easter holiday weekend, if you're celebrating, enjoy your family. You have the Easter egg hunt on Saturday. Rotary Club sponsoring that. Got like, what, like 5, 6,000 eggs stuffed, something crazy? So 7,000? I don't know, but you have a lot of eggs. It's hoping the weather's going to be nice. Bring your family out, bring the little ones out, let them find some eggs, enjoy the new tot lot, and have a nice Easter weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Holly Harmon. Please state your name and address for the record.
7,000 eggs.
7,000 eggs.
Holy mackerel.
Holly Harmon, Hillside Avenue. Yes, 7,000 eggs. I still have cramps in my thumb from snapping them shut. Just wanted to address the fact that I... The cleanup seems to be started on the other burn-up properties on Park Avenue. There's a couple of nice big dumpsters. It looks like they made a lot of headway. Starting to really look like it's going to be cleaned up. And I applaud the council for moving forward and actually using the Act 90 that was voted on years ago to get this taken care of. And again, I want to also echo what Kurt said about the tot lot. It was a lot of fun the other day. The kids had a blast with the Easter egg bunny there. And I think going forward, when more projects come through, it's going to make, well, be a nice location for a lot of families around here. And the last thing was, again, thank you for everybody who came out and helped with the cleanup. We kicked it out, I think, in record time. And it was a nice day, and it was a lot of... A lot of good work got done that day, so thank you.
Thank you, Holly, for your generous donation for those plants at the plaza, too. Appreciate it. Next is Bill Minder. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Bill Minder, 423 Crown Street. On Pennsylvania Avenue and Maple Avenue, there is a manhole, which is about, in my estimation, four to six inches below the surface of the rest of the street, and it acts like a pothole. And you can't see it until you're on top of it, and then it's too late. So my advice is to have them fix it, make it even with the rest of the street, or paint it so you can see it before you get there, so you can avoid it. It's at Pennsylvania Avenue and Maple Avenue.
And Maple?
Right.
All right.
I know exactly which one he's talking about because I hit it every morning.
Oh, yeah, it's okay. Thank you for...
We'll take a look at that.
Okay, everybody have a happy Easter.
You too. Thank you very much.
It's a manhole or a storm drain?
It's a...
It's a manhole? Okay, that's... Does Pendot have to deal with that? Is that a Pendot thing on that road?
It's all Pennsylvania Avenue.
Okay, may I have to notify them? Okay. Jane Berger, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Storm drain.
Jane Berger, 90 West Maple Avenue, Marsville. On the bill list, there's two bills for Johnson Controls for municipal building repairs and improvements. Perhaps when you get to the bill list, somebody might explain just what those repairs were that had to be done for that. Okay, that's my resident hat. I'll now wear my hat as a member of the Marshall Business Association Board. I want to thank the Borough Council for supporting us in the car show. And we got the permit from Pendot to close Bridge Street on Saturday, May 11th. From... The car show will be from 3 to 6. We will close it slightly before, obviously, to set up and afterwards. There's a lot of enthusiasm. The business community down on Bridge Street is excited about that. So the MBA is glad to be doing something that will positively showcase our borough. The other thing is I'd left with the borough this morning. We're having our annual, the spring dinner meeting of the MBA, next Monday, the 22nd. And we will be meeting at Anthony's Four Pizza Restaurant at his new location at 335 Rest Bridge Street. We're meeting there one because it's his new location, and we want everybody to come there and see it. And also because it's a way to also support our local businesses. For our information, there is a charge for the dinner meeting, which is $25. If you can't come for the dinner, but you're coming later for the business meeting, please let me know. There's more information, for those that may be watching or listening, on the MBA Facebook and website. And please Google, because I'm having a brain freeze right now, what that is. Everybody knows me, knows I'm not technically savvy. But we are looking forward to the MBA, to having an active year. We'll be announcing a special scholarship. I don't want to steal the thunder from next Monday night. But also, the executive director from the Lower Books Chamber of Commerce is going to be there. So if there's any local businesses, you don't have to be a member of the MBA to come to this. But the MBA is now a member of the chamber, and there are a lot of benefits of this association we have with them to our local businesses that are members of the chamber. So it's my plug for the MBA, and everyone have a good Passover and a joyous Easter. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's the end of our public comment. We'll close it at this time. And we will move on to approval of the minutes. If it's a pleasure of the council, we can vote for these minutes at one time, unless someone has something about one of the minutes that they need to talk about or need to pull for any reason. Okay? Okay. Then I will make a motion to approve the council meeting... Council Agenda Meeting Minutes of Tuesday, March 12th, 2019, and the regular meeting of Monday, March 18th, 2019. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. Okay, the next one would be the finance report. Everyone receive the finance report in your packet. If there's any questions you have about that, this would be the time to ask.
If Scott could address the JCI invoices, that would be great.
I think they were for service, weren't they? Do you have your bill list handy? John, these are our service calls that we had, right?
For the boiler?
Yep.
Is that maybe a routine?
Yeah.
Maintenance thing?
Well, one apart went bad and had to be replaced, and, yeah, it was just for maintenance.
Regular maintenance and something had to be replaced apart?
Yep.
Okay. All right. I think that was the only one that's on there, right? This... Okay. All right, so next then, I will go to 7B would be a call for motion to approve the bill list and pay the bills. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments on the bill list? Okay, and if we could have a roll call when you're ready, Virginia?
Yes.
Councilman Driss?
Yes.
Councilman Lefronigl?
Yes.
Councilman Laris?
Yes.
Councilman Nag?
Yes, sorry.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
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 Motion passes eight-zero. Okay, our junior counsel is not here tonight. He was under the weather, so he won't be speaking. And our mayor's not here tonight, so there won't be any report from him. We're going to move on to the action items. Before we go on with them, I was told by the manager tonight that we will be pulling 9B and 9C off the agenda for a vote because these were already actually voted on in October of 2018, and no one realized we had done that. So we apologize for that, but these were already pre-approved. Okay. Then we will move on to the first action item, which is a call for motion to cancel the June 2019 Agenda Meeting due to the conflict with the annual PSAB conference. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This... Our conference runs from June 9th to June 12th, and our Agenda Meeting happens to fall right during that time period, so that's why we were canceling that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. We'll skip down then to 9D. A call for motion to approve and execute the site development agreement between Marshall Borough and Britton Industries. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Can I just reiterate from the work session that this technically has already been approved by the borough? A previous council approved this. The reason why we're bringing it back to you for approval is basically just to reaffirm that previous decision and to authorize the appropriate officers to execute the documents.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this motion? Everyone got it? Okay. When you're ready, Virginia, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Councilman Driss?
Yes.
Councilman Lefronigl?
Yes.
Councilman Laris?
Yes.
Councilman Nag?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Missin?
Yes.
And Councilman Nag?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Number 9E?
And...
Oh, I'm sorry.
If I may, on 9E, there's already been a change to the date. We got a late word that they'd like to change the date to October 5th instead of the 19th.
Okay. We'll make that change. Okay. It's a call for motion to approve the Marshall Recreation Board holding a Marshall Music Festival in Williamson Park on Saturday, 10/5/19.
Second.
Okay. Who did the... Eileen did the... Okay.
Can I just ask a quick question to Ms. Drissblak? I know this is a resident-driven committee, but can we have a little bit more information about...
about, as to what the festival's going to be? Is it going to be a bunch of bands, one or two bands, specific type of music?
There's probably going to be about three bands there, three or four. And there will be food trucks there as well.
You say food trucks?
Yes.
Do you know, oh, sorry. Is it, is it a certain type of music that you, that it's going to be, or?
It's going to be rock, soft rock.
Soft rock? Are do you, are they?
Mild. It's not going to be loud and obnoxious.
Well, somebody's loud and obnoxious might be somebody else's.
Yeah, really. Something they want, yes.
Do you, do you have the three bands picked out yet?
They have two of them, yeah, already.
Two of them, okay. And do you, is there like a theme, or is it kind of a regular?
I don't think they have a theme right now.
If I might, because I was at the meeting when they were talking about this as well. So it's going to be a fall festival. So that's kind of your theme is because of the fall. They're still working out the specifics on what bands and exactly what's going to take place, because they first needed to find out if they can have the park at that time before they could start scheduling anything. So that's kind of what we're doing here, is we're giving them the okay to move forward on a specific date so they can start scheduling these things.
And I believe that when I was at the, the last meeting, well, the last one and one before that, they were actually talking about, at that time, trying to find the food trucks and who would be pulled into, kind of like National Night Out does when they have to pull all that together. So I think they were working on all those details.
They were working with someone to help us with getting the food trucks together and whatnot.
And from what I had heard at the meeting was, they were also looking to do some fall time activities with the kids.
Yeah, crafts, painting pumpkins and things like that.
Pumpkins and things like that, and they're still working out that. So more details about this will come as it's progressing along. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Bowers?
Yes.
Councilman Drysby?
Yes.
Councilman McChronicle?
Yes.
Councilman Laris?
Yes.
Councilman Day?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilman Day?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Okay, we did 9F. We will skip down to 9G. Call for motion to approve advertising the short-term lodging facilities ordinance for the May 20th, 2019 meeting. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Now we'll open for any questions or comments on the motion.
I just want to reiterate the concern that I had had in the agenda meeting, just for the public's knowledge. This, the, our code enforcement company came to our November 2018 agenda meeting and basically had a version of this and said that it was too expensive to enact. So I'm not sure, I asked what basically changed from November, from the November version to the April version, and I was told that nothing really changed. So I have concerns that this, although it may be something that we need, I don't know how we're going to enact it. So that's just my, that's my concern. I don't know how we're going to pay to enact this.
What does enact mean exactly?
Enforce.
Well, I don't think they had a problem enforcing. I think they had a problem, from my recollection, it was a problem with proactively working it. I don't believe that there was any discussion of reactive follow-up from complaints that we wouldn't be able to enforce that.
Right, I mean, and this is just my recollection, I'm sure we can go back to the minutes, but my recollection is that there wasn't any statement made by code enforcement people that there were costs associated with actually enacting or enforcing this ordinance. I mean, it should bring in, at least theoretically, you know, you get, you get some registration fees, so hopefully that helps defray whatever administrative costs are tied to this. But in terms of enforcement, the, the ordinance is actually drafted to create a more streamlined procedure, so it should actually take a little less time and manpower to prosecute violations of this, whether it's for failure to register or violating the provisions of your license once you get them. And again, this is just to advertise the ordinance.
Anyone else? Okay. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Bowers?
Yes.
Councilman Drysby?
Yes.
Councilman McChronicle?
No.
Councilman Day?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilman Day?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilman Day?
Yes.
Motion passes six-two. Next motion is 9H, call for motion to approve sponsoring the Marsville Restaurant Week, Sunday, October 6th through Saturday, October 12th. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion?
Can I ask what exactly sponsoring is for this event? Is there any financial backing, or is it just in name?
This is the third year, and we, it's never, the borough never contributes any financial.
Okay.
It's, the Facebook page is free, and everything that the restaurants, who are graciously enough to, to give in their donations, everything comes from the restaurants.
Great, thank you.
And also Mid-Atlantic Printing in town also, again, very graciously prints out our posters and our tabletops, and they do all that free of charge, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Where's the, the funds being raised going to again this year? I'm sorry.
This year, the funds are going to the Ivan's House, which is located on Trenton Avenue. They have a Facebook, they also have a Facebook page and a website, I believe.
Thank you.
If I could just make a suggestion for next year, when this happens, I know it's a, it's a great thing to give it to nonprofits, it's been gone to different ones each year. For me, just a suggestion would be that maybe the donations next time could go back into something for the downtown redevelopment area, for the businesses, or some, something that would benefit them actually in, on Main Street. I researched a few years ago, some different little programs that were used in small municipalities where they were working on finding revenue to do matching grants, to do facade changes, to do just some cleanup things that they needed, painting, things like that with different businesses. And they actually partnered with a school, and they did a few of the fundraisers with them that would benefit pulling some money into, the businesses could actually utilize the money in their Main Street for revitalization. Just, just a suggestion for next year. Anyone else? Okay.
Councilman Bowers?
Yes.
Councilman Drysby?
Yes.
Councilman McChronicle?
Yes.
Councilman Laris?
Yes.
Councilman Day?
Yes.
Councilman L...
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilman Day?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Okay, we don't have any unfinished business, there's no new business. Okay, anyone have anything under borough officials, and then I'll go last, I'll have everyone else go first. Just have one thing to say, so anybody else has anything they'd like to say?
I'll jump in if that's okay.
Sure.
So Ms. Harmon had brought up in, in public comment, the Park Avenue properties that we're starting to see some, some movement in. I'm very pleased that there's, there's some activity there. It's by no means a finished project, or a, this isn't a mission accomplished statement, but it's, it's good to see that after two years, and tomorrow will be the two-year mark, when those buildings burnt down, after two years, we're finally seeing something. And that cleanup is very important to the folks that live down there. It's been a thorn in their side for a very long time, and I'm, I'm glad that this council has moved to make, to make the statement that it's unacceptable to leave a property to rot in this town. It affects the entire neighborhood. Thank you.
Sure, thanks. Anyone else?
Yeah, if I could just follow up with what I had mentioned at the agenda meeting regarding the DCED police management audit. I did get a copy of an audit from Concha Hocken. The chief there mailed it to me, it was his only copy, so I'm in process. Scott has suggested maybe that we could break it apart and copy it and reassemble it for him, provided we get permission. The DCED gave me three recommendations, Concha Hocken, Cootstown, and Mount Pocono. And I'm guessing because they were probably close to size of our own municipality. So I just want to do, also on Mr. Jaeger's concern regarding a presentation, the DCED, DCED does not do presentations per se for this type of review. But the presentation, if you will, are the results of that review itself. So there's nothing, it's done ahead of time for that. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. And I guess pass that information on to the borough manager. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to let everyone know that May 18th, we will be down at the Marsville Senior Center for the bench dedication. We have a time of 11 o'clock.
Yeah, I have to, I have to confirm it with them. I did speak with Kathy from there, the date is open. It's only going to be a short presentation, probably from 11 to 12. We can have everyone meet downstairs for some coffee and some light refreshments until, give everyone a chance to arrive. And families have been notified, well, Eileen's here, so she knows. And Judge Burns' family also, and any of the friends and anyone here, officials, please come down on that day. Hopefully, we have good weather. And the benches came out really nice. Our Public Works is going to help get the plaques actually mounted on there. They came out beautiful, so we wait for the weather to get good. If it ever stops raining, John, I'll get those plaques to you. But they came out really nice, and so we really would like everyone to come and do a formal dedication for those benches, so, okay.
Madam President, I have one more thing I forgot.
Okay.
And this was also talked about in, in public comment. This coming Saturday, the 20th, is the Easter egg hunt at Williamson Park at the stage area. The last couple of years, we've had huge turnouts, hundreds of kids, 7,000-plus eggs to be given out, dozens of door prizes, all free for the public.